There's something happening here. What it ain't exactly clear.
Yeah, something sure is happening here and what it is ain't exactly clear. But Retake Our Democracy in this radio show, blog, Zoominars, and our statewide alert system try to keep you informed so that you can both understand what's happening here and do something about it. Good morning. I'm Paul Gibson, host of Retake Our Democracy. Retake Our Democracy airs every Saturday morning at 8:30 a.m. on KSFR 101.1 FM, your public radio station. Good morning. You're listening to Retake Our Democracy. And today, last week rather, we spoke with two candidates for the New Mexico State Senate who are just begging to join the New Mexico State Senate. Carrie Hamlin, who's challenging Senate Pro Tem Mary Kay Papen, and Naomi Martinez-Para, challenging Senator John Arthur Smith. Today's guest is Kate Noble, president of the Santa Fe Public School System, and interestingly, a mother of a third grader. So we'll be able to talk about how things could, things are going both from, for the school district and also for a mom and a father who are trying to participate in their kids' distance learning. And we'll find out about the impact on the school district from the COVID budget crunches and also, you know, just how Kate is able to juggle being the board president, parent, and have a job all during this COVID crisis. And we'll be talking with Kate in just a few moments. First, I want to share a word with you about a very interesting primary in New Mexico, especially as relates to the New Mexico State Senate. The word I have from knowledgeable sources is there is a real chance of victory for five challengers running against Mexico State Senate dinos. And that is flat out amazing. I've been told that Carrie Hamlin's race against Senator Pro Tem Mary Kay Papen and Naomi Martinez-Para are running very closely against John Arthur Smith and again, Mary Kay Papen. Even better, I've been told that Saya Correa Hempel has an outstanding chance of defeating Senator Dave Ramos, and Pam Cordova is also a possible winner against Senator Clemente Sanchez. Finally, up here in Rio Grande County, it looks like Commissioner Leo Harameo has a tremendous shot at evicting Senator Richard Martinez. Taken together, that's five winnable races. These races could be won or lost by 40 or 50 votes, and so you can make a difference. Retake has a page on its website with links to endorsements and contact info on all five of those races, and you can call from home or donate online. But we won't get a chance to fix the New Mexico State Senate for another four years, and we've got a really, really good shot to do so in 2020. You can get to our Fix the Senate page by going to retakeourdemocracy.org and hovering over the elections in the menu, in the menu bar, and you will see Fix the Senate Primary Campaigns. Click on it, and you'll have all the info you need to make a difference in the June 2 primary. We've had a series of really interesting and very different KSFR shows that are now available with audio and visual. Shows with Dar Jamile and Greg Rogers, others with Sophie, and another with Philip Shepard. Each in their own ways showcased some very different perspectives on our national and state responses to COVID. The looming climate crisis and the collapse of our economy and how this could, this COVID might just cause us all to reflect upon our need to consider a completely new way of how we organize people, how we organize work, and our resources as a nation and as a state and as a community. And Retake Our Democracy is going to be doing some deep dives into that over the next few weeks. We've got a study group assembled, and we're recruiting others who would like to participate in some deep research into what a new normal might look like. A completely different economic and political system. Think local land, local farming systems, think public banking, think public utilities, think healthcare for all. All of these things are possible. All of these things would be a dramatic departure from the systems that have gotten us in the mess we're in now. If COVID-19 has done nothing else, it has demonstrated the utter failure of capitalism and of privatization and neoliberal model of organizing our resources. We were not ready for this, and we were not able to assemble any kind of a response. So stay tuned for that. We'll have stuff about that on our blog at retakeourdemocracy.org. And that will, I highly recommend that you subscribe to our blog because that's where you'll get information about what's coming up next, including our Zoominars. We've got a Zoominar coming up on the 9th of June, and then we're going to talk about the PRC, PNM, and the Energy Transition Act, and we're going to talk with some members of a group that Roxanne and I are members of, and that's the PNM Shareholders for a Responsible Future. So you can look forward to all of that. Just go to retakeourdemocracy.org, sign up for the blog, and you'll be glad you did because there's all kinds of great information there. So we're going to get back now, and we're going to talk with Kate Noble. And so I'm with Kate Noble. Welcome, Kate.
Thank you. Good to be here.
I always like to let our guests just introduce themselves. So how did you wind up becoming a school board person? How did you wind up in the role you are right now?
Okay, well, it's a little bit of my life story, but I'll see if I can make it brief. I grew up in Santa Fe, went through the Santa Fe Public Schools, got what I would say was an extraordinary education in the Santa Fe Public Schools, finishing up at Santa Fe High. And I went on to study film at Columbia University in New York City. And as I went through my film education, I decided I wanted to tell real stories, not made up ones, because that was really important. And I realized I liked short form, which before too long led me to journalism and television journalism. And I ended up with an extraordinary job in BBC World News, doing business and economic programs for 10 years. And that was the best education one could ever have about economics and business and how things operate, because as a reporter, you get to go out and ask questions of smart people all day long. And after about 10 years, and I crossed 30, and a number of things sort of happened with my family, I decided it was time to come home. I needed to come back to Santa Fe. And I thought, maybe I can take all this knowledge that I've accumulated with the BBC and economics and business and apply it in my hometown in economic development. So I started asking around and trying to work in economic development, and the networks in Santa Fe worked. And I ended up in a job with the City of Santa Fe in economic development. Over the course of about the next 10 years, that was the job that I did, including community development and supervising affordable housing and long-range planning. And through all of that, as I investigated and through the Great Recession, I started at the City of Santa Fe really right after the Great Recession began, and started working in recovery and diversification and how do we develop our economy and what do we do to be a community and provide community supports? And as I thought about this and distilled the economic development work over that decade, it came down to one thing, which was education. If there is a silver bullet in developing an economy, it's education. Fast forward to that fateful night when a lot of us thought that Hillary Clinton would be the next president. And as the election returns came in, and it looked bad and tears, and then I went to bed, and I'm not sure I would have gotten up the next morning had it not been for my child. By the end of the next day, after Donald Trump had been declared the winner of the election and our next president, I had reached out about, basically, and I found myself thinking as somebody with a media background, the media was the problem. There was a lot of fake news out there. I saw what had happened on social media, and I thought, you know what? Public education is both the problem because it's not good enough and the solution because if you really have people who have access to a good education and get that, every other problem solves itself. And by the end of the day, I had discovered that there was an election for the school board coming up, that the incumbent in my district was not running, and I had basically decided to run. So in 2017, I was in February elected to the school board. I've now, we're just completing my fourth preparation of a budget because it's actually because of the Local Election Consolidation Act. My term is four years and 10 months. And it's been fascinating, but with some changeover and the evolving leadership, I am now in my second year as president of the school board. And, you know, I would say all the skills I learned at the city about running and staffing committees, the Economic Development Committee, which I did for 10 years, are really useful because it turns out, you know, Robert's Rules and how committees run, which is actually a lot of soft skills of keeping personalities in line and that sort of thing have been really useful and, you know, making sure that we have a coherent agenda that flows and working with the superintendent. So I love my job as president of the school board, and I think I'm doing a good job. I hope a lot of folks would agree, and I've really tried to open it up so that is more of a communal and, for lack of a better word, democratic approach to it that is, it's really about the collective there. And that's how I approach that role.
Interesting. It's interesting what you said about the importance of education because I've always felt that the Republicans undermining of public education and unfunding of public education and creation of charter schools and private schools and stuff was entirely about trying to dumb down America so that, you know, their kind of profits-driven kind of politics could somehow be palatable to people who aren't as informed and don't have that kind of critical thinking that they need to have in order to really weigh things. So I couldn't agree with you more. So before we dive into the school board issues, how about if you just tell us just a little bit about what it's like being a mom and have a job and have a school board role and all of that, how do you juggle all of this during COVID?
Well, juggle is the operative word. It's really, really hard. And I actually did a forum with a candidate for one of the recent elections, and I was asked, you know, what's your advice to families? And I just think it's that you've got to give yourself some slack and, you know, embrace the sort of volatility of it, the ups and downs, the continual learning process. My husband is a scientist at Los Alamos National Lab, and he actually went in to do some lab experiments yesterday, and he said, how was it? And he'd done the same thing for one day last week. They're, you know, going back cautiously. And I completely failed last week when he went in, and my child was on his screen all day long, and neither of us managed to eat properly, and we both end up in tears at the end of the day. And, you know, the good news is I was able to learn and correct for some of that yesterday and manage to make sure that when I had breaks in between Zoom meetings, that I did get my child nutritious food, that I had some activities that he could do that were not on the screen, that we, you know, planted some stuff, worked in the garden together, you name it. So it's just variable, but it's really, really hard. And, you know, to embrace the fact that this is new, we are all learning, there are layers of compounding things like stress and anxiety that are happening particularly to kids because they're the sponges and they're emotional creatures and haven't sort of learned all of the, we could say coping skills, we could say dulling mechanisms that adults have to their emotions. But, you know, ultimately, to approach it as just sort of, with a great deal of forgiveness for oneself and for humanity and the people, people are edgy, people are irritable, and there's good articles out there. I personally am somebody who coaxed by reading a huge amount of the New York Times, particularly the opinion section right now is holding me up. But there are all these things that are like, you know, headlines like, why am I so, why does everything irritate me right now? And just to understand and to, to some extent, normalize it with the collective experience is important. But it's, you know, it's hard, and I'm fortunate to have a full-time job and to not have loss of income, and my husband's too, and we have enough space in our home that, you know, my child and my husband and I can find different places. So there's a lot of privilege here that, you know, I'm very glad to have and really conscious of plenty of people out there who don't have what we have. But the fact is, it's hard. It's really hard to work, to be isolated, to have to support school, and, you know, to process all of the emotional things. And I don't have any great answers except do your best day by day and be gentle with yourself and others. And I'm trying to internalize that for myself and my family.
So it's really refreshing to hear a leader, a community leader, express what it's really like instead of glossing over things as someone in Washington DC does on a daily basis. There are so many ways that COVID is impacting the public schools, and we'll cover them one by one. But first, you've described the distance learning experience a bit from the parent perspective. How do you feel it is working for teachers and students?
Again, it's just variable. Put really simply, the Santa Fe Public Schools in every school district in New Mexico and pretty much in the country is not set up as a distance learning district. So, you know, I would actually challenge everyone to look at what's happened in our school district in the state and beyond as what's possible in crisis when innovation needs to happen. And so to think about it not against a level of what would perfect distance learning be like, because that's too high a bar. But the fact that we turned it around in Santa Fe, we were ahead because of the educational technology node, in essence, a bond that the voters of Santa Fe have generously supported that got us basically to a point where we could make sure that every student had a device, mostly a Google Chromebook, which is not quite a laptop. It's not as powerful or as expensive. But we were about two weeks ahead of anybody else in the state because of that. And we turned it around within three weeks, one of them being spring break. The staff did not take spring break at all. Everybody just dug in and knew what was going to happen and started to figure out distance learning. The teachers and the staff were honest to goodness amazing. They had to change their entire plan of instruction, and they all did. And it was mixed. It was mixed across the board. A lot of it had to do with the individual teachers and individual schools. There was a frustration of different platforms and technology. We skipped over some of the basics, I realized, actually, because one of our student board members did a presentation about his younger siblings, well, and mentioned his younger siblings and said, you know, nobody taught them to manage an email inbox. And to me, this was a giant light bulb for my own child. It was like, oh, that was part of the problem. He has no idea how to manage email. And I kept saying, well, did you check your email like he should know? And I hadn't gone through the basics with him. So, you know, to what we did in terms of the district itself, but really critically, families and how everybody and the students, perhaps most importantly, adjusted and rolled with it, just honestly fills me with such joy and pride to what we did. And that, of course, was also dealing with some of the frustrations, the technological frustrations, the getting online, the instability of the internet, the realizing that internet is a critical utility. All of these things sort of happened at once, and we did okay. It wasn't the most exemplary educational system you could imagine by any means, but I think kids did learn. They learned a lot, and some of it might not be, you know, completely crosswalkable to the common core standards, but it was about technology. It was about email inboxes. I can tell you, you know, some of the best things Mike has learned is about gardening and cooking. I didn't know, he didn't know how to turn on the stove. Now he does. And, you know, if we can sort of encourage that and embrace that, I think we have a way forward. And critically, I'm hoping that we collectively as a community can really capture some of the best and the worst of the period we've been through because this was, you know, if we were talking about entrepreneurship, this was a period of rapid prototyping, of incredibly rapid innovation, and we need to take a minute in the summer to reflect on what we figured out, learn those lessons, and do better going forward.
Hey, well, thank you for that. You know, and you've mentioned that you enjoy a fair amount of privilege as to Roxanne and I. But for some families in Santa Fe, families that maybe don't have an internet, maybe kids who don't have a parent who could really help with some of the things that you're doing with your child, what is the district doing to try and help those families overcome the discrepancy and privilege and access?
Yeah. Well, honestly, access is almost the easier thing because we can measure and have been able to measure how many students are getting online, and the number's quite high on a pretty much daily or weekly basis. We're getting about 97% of our students logging on, and of course, that's trackable into the district system. In identifying the families that don't have internet access and that sort of thing, the district ordered as many hotspots as we could get. So in essence, a card that will make a device like a cellular phone and just go up to a cellular connection. Now, that doesn't solve the problem if there's no cellular service. If there's no cellular service and there's no hardwired, those are the families that we provided in partnership with the city, hotspots at schools so they could pull up into the parking lot and use the Wi-Fi there. But that's really difficult, you know? Those are, those are actually surprisingly small numbers to many of us in the district, and we were able to get those hotspots out to a lot of folks and really bridge a lot of that divide by getting people the access if they didn't have internet connectivity at home to cellular networks that are paid for by the district. Honestly, in terms of parents to help with schoolwork, first of all, I just want to say I have been uniquely terrible at that. If it weren't for my husband, like, I don't even know what would have happened. It is not, it's not in my scores, my skill set really, to help with that sort of thing. But, you know, that's a very, very difficult thing, and that was frankly up to individual teachers to identify the students who might need more help. There were some schedules created, and one of them was that there were supposed to be some sort of flexible time, whether it was off hours or something in the afternoon, that teachers could reach out and sort of say to their kids, why don't you log on at this time or why don't you do this? In my son's class, the teacher basically just, she said, I'm going to read stories at 1:15 every day. And actually, my child was often the only one who logged on to that, and it was his favorite time. And he would just, he would take his Chromebook outside, and he would lie in the shade and just listen to a story. And it was when he was at his calmest and honestly most engaged with the school stuff. So I think there were a lot of individual things for students who have individual education plans, whether it's special ed for a disability or because they're gifted or something like that. That program did operate, and there were separate times for that. So there were a bunch of solutions, but ultimately, you know, this is, it's the same question as when we have students in buildings, which is how do you individualize well? And how do you meet students where they are and provide a sort of wraparound support for all of their needs that, you know, takes into account what's going on at home? So again, ultimately, that has to be done with the person who has the individual relationship with the student and be guided by the teacher. And we hope that the district can provide support for teachers as they learn, you know, what kids need and are able to sort of come around and provide those supports.
All right. We've got about three minutes or two minutes for this next question, and that, and we may spill over into our podcast for your response so that'll get people to...
There's a teaser.
This is the teaser. The state budget is obviously in a state of flux, and there's, have a special session June 18th, as you know. What's the state of the budget for the school district and what are you looking for in, by way of relief from the state and the feds?
So we passed a balanced budget this week, an initial balanced budget, and it's painful, but truly what we need to look at is probably the next year. That's when it could be really troublesome, and we need the state to hold fast on the raises for employees. That's something that's really important to me. We can't cut teachers' pay. We've learned how important teachers are, you know? That's something that many, many parents, and if there's one thing I would want everybody to remember, it's like teachers are critical workers, and we have to support them.
We're looking at a lot of essential workers out there that we have taken for granted.
We absolutely have taken too many essential workers for granted, and, you know, this is the foundation of a civilized society, is providing a robust public education. So the cuts already are somewhat painful at the district level and will make it hard to do things like administer a distance learning program from a centralized source because we cut district staff. However, we have to keep cuts away from the classroom, away from where the rubber meets the road, which is the educators out there who are working with students. That is by far the most important thing. Really, the federal government, the $2.6 million that we're getting of federal aid has made the difference between what is somewhat painful budget cuts and what is restructuring our entire organization because the budget's been reduced so substantially. That $2.6 million, you know, in bridging what is about a $7.1 million gap is a big deal. So the advocacy for aid from the federal government, because of course, the magnitude of what's possible gets much bigger as you go up in levels of government. And so we need our federal government to have a robust response that will make school districts whole because we cannot. And I'm already, I'm hearing from people who can't afford private school anymore. So, you know, maybe we'll get a more robust public system. There are a lot of people who are of privilege who are considering homeschooling, but ultimately, you know, we need to invest more in this because costs are going up for, you know, things like custodial services, sanitation, in order to keep people safe from public health, and we're seeing budget cuts. And those two things really are at odds when we need to do the most basic thing of providing a quality education for students and supporting the families that they live with.
Well, we'll continue on that when we get back on the podcast, but Kate, if you want to tell our listeners where they can get more information about the school district and you, go ahead.
So the central source is sfps.info. That's our website. There's also the Santa Fe Public Schools on Facebook, where a lot of good information is shared. If you navigate the website, you can look under the board. You can always find my email address or other board members, and I would say, reach out to us directly. You know, really having constituents share their experiences and ideas is an important part, particularly in local government. So reach out to us. Our superintendent is an amazing administrator. We're lucky to have her, and she's incredibly responsive. You can reach out to her with individual questions, but sfps.info and the Santa Fe Public Schools on Facebook are really good places to find information and to reach out.
Okay, well, thank you, Kate. That's all the time we have for Retake Our Democracy on KSFR. But if you want to continue listening to this conversation, it'll be posted at retakeourdemocracy.org. Just hover over the actions and events page and scroll down a little bit, and you'll... Oh my God. Goodbye, folks. The phone is ringing. I can't believe that happened.
You don't silence your phone? You don't silence your phone?
And I'm sorry to listeners that, that my phone did that, but we'll move on. We're on the podcast now, and so it's a lot more informal. And I'd just like to say that we were just talking about the critical importance of public education and, and how we have to find all kinds of ways to ensure that you have the resources to do the job you need to do and how essential those workers are. I harbor some hope that come November, we'll have a changing of the guard at the federal level. And the leadership in January, well, boy, look at that sigh of hope.
Oh, hala, yes.
And I, I think we'll finally have leadership where they'll go, okay, we've really got to jumpstart everything back. And we, and, and it'll be done, it'll be done better, way better than this. So we've got a fingers crossed on that. How much of an impact do you think that COVID and distance learning and all of that is having on the morale of teachers and, and students for that matter? Is it, is it boosting it or is it not?
Well, I guess overall, I think we are at a real mile marker in our human society and in our educational system. And we don't know how profoundly, and I believe it will be incredibly profoundly, this period will affect things in the long term. I think it will frankly, increase probably the resilience of our children. You know, the, I have great concern for those who are in unsafe households. Public schools are safe spaces. And I'm not sure that we can overestimate the severity of the issues of domestic abuse and violence that we may see coming out of this that are going underreported, that are, you know, increased by stresses and economic stresses. And so I think we need to have really a, a robust response. I'm not sure we've done it very well, you know, we're still sort of in the hand wringing, it's probably bad period of recognition. And we haven't really figured out what to do yet. So that's very serious for probably a majority of students and families that are in safe households. I think this will, you know, make them stronger in some ways, bring them together. By absolute necessity, foster greater communication. I mean, that's happening in my household. We are learning to talk with my son in ways that we haven't before. And, and you know, it, it's a trial. And I, I think that there's some hope as to what comes out of this. I think teachers are, you know, so many teachers are parents too. So they're working from home, feeling responsible for other people's children as well as their own. So that, those sort of layers of stress, I think we need to work to understand. But my hope is that teachers and educators are feeling the sort of general zeitgeist out there of appreciation of how many of us are really viscerally understanding the importance of what they do in keeping our kids safe and happy six hours a day. You know, even Jimmy Fallon had a little riff, acoustic riff on his guitar that he did on his late night show that was called Teachers Should Make a Billion Dollars. And it's a very sweet little thing. And he sings about why teachers should make a billion dollars. And the last line of the song is, and that's why teachers should make a billion dollars twice a week. And it really, you know, that just sort of feels to me like right. It's like there is, there is no price too high.
Right.
Money in terms of what, what should be happening here. And I, I really hope that teachers are feeling that because this is so profound, what is going on, what we're realizing, what we're experiencing, what they're experiencing. And you know, I, I guess the optimist in the hopes that it makes students and families stronger, more resilient and that, that thing that we call grit increases. And that teachers have a renewed appreciation in society at large and that they feel that appreciation for the essential work that they do. But there are plenty of negatives, you know, that's sort of the Pollyanna view. There are plenty of negatives that we really work on mitigating.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure that the district is hoping to be reopening in the fall. And, and yet, you know, when you look at the photographs and video on the news of Memorial Day across the country and seeing people at parties and cars packed together. For myself, I'm not very optimistic that we're going to be back to normal in September, October, November, anytime soon. So I'm imagining that the district is also making plans for, okay, if twenty twenty-one is going to be remote, how do we do this? What kinds of discussions are going on at the school board?
Well, ultimately, in this state, I think we're fortunate to have a governor and public education department who made some good decisions and have been very strong and clear on the guidance. So ultimately, the guidance will come from the public education department in consultation with the Department of Health. And obviously, the governor is a public health official herself. So that's what we're waiting for. In the meantime, we're making lots of contingency plans. You know, some of the guidance may be instructive that there's been, you know, what if we needed to operate the buildings at fifty percent capacity? So if we did a morning and afternoon session, or if we did alternate days, there's lots of possibilities being considered, hybrids of distance and in-person time. And you know, again, as I sort of talked about on the broadcast, if we think about what we've learned and what are some of the best practices, there are things that are better done in a virtual realm. We've actually had some increases in parent participation in PTA meetings at some schools that have had trouble with getting parents to come to PTA meetings. But what if they don't have to come? What if you do it virtually? I mean, we've seen, I think, a thirty percent uptick in, in some places. So maybe parent engagement is best done like this, when everybody can mute and cook dinner at the same time or whatever it is.
You know, it's, it's just to stop you there for a second, Kate. I mean, I think a lot of people are encountering that kind of thing. Retake had, you know, monthly, sometimes twice monthly meetings at fourteen twenty cerrios. And we'd get forty, fifty, sometimes a hundred, but certainly not often a hundred. And it was a real hard thing and it was a hardship for people because you'd have it right at dinnertime. And now we do these Zoom things twice a month on, at six thirty in the evening. And we're getting huge turnout. And plus, we're getting great guests because they don't have to come to Santa Fe. And so we've had people from around...
Oh, sure.
And so it's really improved our delivery of information to our constituents. So I think there are going to be some silver linings.
Yeah, and dance classes don't have to be, you know, on one side of town. We've found, you know, physical education, there's been some real bright spots. Engaging mentors in the community around high school projects. I mean, all, some of these things have really been better and stronger in the educational system. But you know, again, the sort of core thing of, of students go for six hours and parents have a reprieve for that time. That's what's sort of been taken away. And a core thing that I've realized that school is about, and because I have an only child, this may be pronounced. And, and I have an, an only child who's incredibly social. The collective experience, the positive peer pressure of learning of, you know, well, did you do your reading? Did you do your math? And you know, we're social creatures. So how we create that for students and have that sort of positive peer pressure and bringing each other along aspect of our social humanness. And then maybe offer some things because, you know, if we can get greater access and equity access, the internet can open up some avenues for participation. And even for instruction, the idea, the superintendent and I have talked a great deal about what we've called a reverse classroom. Or the instruction, frankly, that can be done in your own time. It can be recorded on YouTube and students can watch it. And then class time can be about their questions and working through the individual understanding of it. And you don't have to take class time up for lectures, lectures can be recorded. So that sort of sit in a classroom model while you absorb information, that could be done in a lot of different ways. And then using the human interaction for what's really important, which is conversation and problem solving and group work and learning to understand each other and be a team. It's really interesting what we could do now. And you know, the fact is, we're waiting for guidance and making a lot of different contingency plans and thinking through, you know, all the different scenarios that, that we can imagine in the Santa Fe Public Schools.
That's really interesting, you're right. I, I, as you were speaking, I was thinking, what if some organization organized... Because I was thinking about that one teacher who has your, your child's, what's your child's name?
Zachary.
Zachary, so that's his favorite part of the day or something, you know, of his school day. What if, you know, throughout the day, there were story hours or story half-hours done by community people, just reading stories at different grade levels so that, you know, students could plug into that? And you know, I, I don't know, there's a lot of possibilities because there's people at home right now looking for something to do.
Yeah, and a lot of schools are doing that, you know, in my day job, which is early childhood policy. And it's connected to the United Way at Santa Fe County and, and the Early Learning Center at Connie. They're doing that for the children in that community. Our public libraries have been pretty good about doing it. Librarians have been reading storytimes, they've been doing it in Spanish. You know, there's a bunch of resources out there for it. And you know, navigating as ever and helping people because of course, information is disparate and unifying information is always important. So I mean, it's something that social media is decent for, but there's, there's not a unifying sort of source of information for families to look for things, as far as I know.
So shift gears just a little bit here. You know, Santa Fe is a community with a robust array of outside recreational parks and trails and so forth. But it's not exactly geographically or economically just in terms of the distribution of those resources. And I know that a year, probably a year and a half, two years ago, I met with the superintendent about Ortiz Middle School, where they had a indoor soccer thing going on Friday evenings, late afternoon and into the early evening, where they also engaged students in mentoring opportunities and tutoring opportunities, but the magnet was the soccer. And they, they shut that down. And I'm wondering if there's, and, and my question is, is the boards looking for, for more ways in which to expand soccer opportunities and things like that? And to use facilities more creatively? And for example, within indoor soccer league? And I realize that in the context of COVID, that's kind of not germane immediately, but it will become germane as this crisis hopefully passes.
So this is one of those things that's really mystifying as a public official because it seems super simple from the outside. Let's let our gyms be used for indoor soccer and support the immigrant community. And on some level, I still think that. And I, I have said any number of times, if I have to die on this hill, I may. But it's often confounding what the hardest things to do are. And this has been one of the hardest things. And honestly, I have pushed and pushed on this. And there are a million answers that our gyms aren't built for indoor soccer, that safety is an issue, the speed at which the ball flies and what the liability issues are. Because if somebody gets hit in the face with a ball flying at that speed and what the damage could be to the facility and this, that and the other. And I had one board member say to me when I was pushing this early on in my school board tenure, if we do this, it will damage the facilities and we will have to increase our replacement rate and therefore increase our bond spending on our facilities. And I was just infuriated and I said, you know what? If that's your argument, we could just close our facilities and not have any bond spending at all. You know, are we a community resource or not?
I think they were actually using Nerf soccer balls too, so...
And that was one of the compromises, was a softer ball. And honestly, when it got shut down and I went into it and, and you know, I don't think it's worth going through who said what on this broadcast. But it sounds like there may have been a misunderstanding. And because the superintendent had said that was okay. And then when I talked to some of the folks that were doing it, they said, we were told we could play volleyball, which of course, is not a viable solution because they don't want to play volleyball, they want to play soccer. And you know, come on. Anyway, and then some of, and, and of course, it's hard to aggregate energy around things. So then when it wasn't possible anymore, and this is why, you know, honestly, people have got to take things to the superintendent because sometimes the distributed decision-making doesn't necessarily work. And, and she was committed to this. And, and a number of us on the board were really, really committed because it is so important to support our immigrant community. And goodness, we can figure out how to replace a clock if we need to or whatever it is that, you know, gets damaged. But as far as I know, nothing has actually gotten damaged and nobody's actually gotten hurt. And I get that it's sort of, and it's a risk tolerance perspective, which I have, you know, pushed with the board and the superintendent that we have got to have higher risk in order to support our immigrant community. You know, if we need to just say, we have the stomach for the potential liability here, fine, let's do that because it's what's right. And there's, anyway, it, it's kind of crazy making. We did for one league, and, and that's the other thing is that, you know, understanding, because sometimes these leagues and these things, they come up in a very grassroots way. And whether they're, how organized they are and can fill out paperwork and this, that and the other, you know, all of these things are issues. We worked with one particular group to get access to the fields at Capshaw on West Zia. And I'm incredibly proud of that work. And it has taken a great deal. Ultimately, this is something where we need the partnership of the city because it is actually the city's responsibility to provide recreational opportunities. It's the school's responsibility to provide education. And that was the core thing that came down to it. And with some other board members saying, our responsibility is the educational program. It's not to be an after-hours recreational facility. And you know, to quote one of my favorite former public servants, you'd think you could figure out who empties the trash and sweeps the floors after hours. And this is where I was really trying to foster some partnership with the city. And you know, we had a couple of good meetings, but ultimately it went, you know, it didn't go anywhere to do that, you know? And, and emptying the trash and custodial services. And the fact is, all these systems are pretty stretched. But I do really feel like we've got to be able to, if and when we can really safely go back inside and breathe heavily indoors, which right now is not so much a thing. We've got to figure out who can sweep the floor and empty the trash and, and has the stomach for the liability. And, and frankly, you know, these public systems, we have good insurance, we'll be fine. And it's, it's just the right thing to do.
So that's a perfect segue because you were talking about trying to get the public, the, the city to partner with the recreational component. When I operated a consulting firm in California, we worked with about, I guess, twenty, maybe twenty-five school districts across the state to help develop a program they call Healthy Start in California. And Healthy Start was a statewide program that helped schools essentially develop community centers, community schools that were open, you know, into the evening and Saturdays and Sundays. And it would be enormously expensive for a school district to operate round the clock. But what they did was they turned over the keys to community organization and the recreation department and social services department and workforce departments and child welfare. And there was counseling and there was parent education, there was recreation, there was dental services, all co-located on a, a school site. And so obviously, it made the school kind of the hub of that neighborhood. And it was especially important in elementary schools. And so I'm wondering if the school district has looked at any of those models?
Absolutely, and we... Absolutely, and we actually have a significant grant from the state to work on community schools. Um, and just to be clear, um, you know, we have a very important nonprofit called Communities in Schools Capital. Um, in, in this town and we partner with them and provide funding at the district. For at-risk students and providing some of those critical supports that we know in the hierarchy of needs. Um, must be taken care of before kids can show up and learn. But really what you just outlined, I think, is the model, the ideal, the future. That we have to push towards because schools are the center of particularly parents and families. Worlds in their community and so to have health centers, you know, particularly one of the schools I represent is El Camino Real. Um, and it's a giant school and has a lot of our immigrant community there. And there has long been a vision to have a community health center there. Um, and funding has been the barrier. Um, you know, we can foster the partnerships. And we have a lot of folks in this community and good nonprofits that can step up and help with some of these services. But the funding has to be there and it just, and, and honestly, school districts, we are so far even, I'm not sure, we're back to two thousand eight. Funding levels. We are so far below um, where we need to be in terms of funding. That, you know, to look at community schools models seems a far stretch. But the fact is, we're doing it anyway and we're engaging with partners and we have, you know, the Sky Center is there as a mental health resource. Um, there's a lot of really great um. Community nonprofits that frankly can do a lot with even a little funding. And we need more of that because we really do need to think about schools as. Um, facilities that are community centers where we provide access to healthcare services. And other support services and we look at a, a multi-generational model of support. Sorry, a car alarm seems to be going off just outside. I'm sure you can hear that. Um, but ultimately, you know, I think that is the vision to look at wraparound services and round the clock. Supports with those facilities being used widely as a public resource. Because that is what they are and we have to get out of this feeling that, you know, frankly, I just described of. Well, the school district's core mandate is education, so that's all we do. And I get it because that is our core mandate and as we transition, there needs to be a balance. But I really hope we can get to a vision where we don't see the boundaries between. The school district and the local government with behavioral health resources and other health resources. Support services and even economic development services to get to a fully rounded, multi-generational approach. Where we understand that taking care of some of the root causes and root issues of poverty. Among other things, but also, you know, systemic inequities, racism that is completely prevalent throughout the system. And we work to deconstruct these things without boundaries that. Are, are false boundaries of we're just about education here, but because we know we can't do education if students aren't fed. Clothed and feeling safe and, and you know, addressing and dealing with the trauma that. Um, students bring into the classroom if they don't have safety at home and all the other things.
Yeah, okay. Well, we've got two more questions. Um, the first question is one that I ask everybody I have on the show. Um, retake has sort of taken the position that the political and economic systems that have delivered us. Uh, a huge wealth gap, um, and then uh, enormous climate crisis looming. And now an utterly failed health system and so forth and medical system in the face of the pandemic. We need some kind of much more, not just tweak around the edges, but a really substantive change. That's our perspective. Um, how do you feel about that? And if we were looking for a new normal, what would be some of the elements of your new normal?
Well, plain and simple, I think we are looking for a new normal. I think we have to and. Again, the great hope in this pandemic is that it's a reset button where we realize. We have to completely reassess our values and, and even our societal foundations. And redo them to include a social justice and equity lens. I mean, we've seen that. In recent weeks so profoundly with what's going on in Minneapolis with. Um, Amy Cooper in Central Park. I mean, it's just, it's, it's sort of. It is so much to see what communities of color have had to and, and to see in this stark relief because. I guess we have the tools now, but this has always been going on and then, and the, the video is there now and, and that is raising it to a new level. But, you know, our new normal has to be a complete equity lens, a social justice. Perspective where everything is constantly looking to continual improvement and correction. Because we have a lot to undo in the systemic inequities. Um, and that has to include our planet and climate change and. You know, these things which also disproportionately impact communities of color and. So looking at that, looking at our consumption again as a lens so that we can. Um, and, and our impact on the environment and how we're operating because there are lots of things we can do, including. Virtual meetings that are lower impact, lower carbon footprint and can increase participation. Um, but I would add to that, you know, public education and public health. And we have to really rethink all of this and, and to some extent, you know, I think about it from. A sort of, let's step back. We have not a bad system in that our system can evolve. By voting people in office, by the checks and balances, by making changes to our system. And those priorities have to be a foundational society where we recommit to the collective good. Where we recognize again that we are in this together and that things aren't fair and we have to work on being more fair. I mean, just like you do in, in a kindergarten classroom, in an elementary school classroom, you know, what is fair? You try and make it fair, but ultimately you manage for the collective good and you constantly are sort of iterating and improving. To make things more fair. So, you know, to me, a new normal and, and my, my good friend Zane Fisher has put out, I hope you've seen it. There's a note on Facebook and he calls it the EEE. I forget, but it's sort of a, a vision for a new normal that looks to equity education and the environment. And it's really smart stuff and there's some very active solutions for local economies. And, you know, things that we can do as a community, but ultimately, if we think about it, to me, that's the foundational value. Let's recommit to the collective of humans are created equal and have inalienable rights. And let's go from there and those have to include things that are good for society like public education. Like robust public health, like an equity and social justice lens applied to everything and. Surrounding it all is our environment and our planet and these things, you know, we know what we have to do. I, I really hope that we can actually start taking action um, in small and large ways. Because it's not good enough to just think about it and say what we need to do anymore. We need to start trying some of these things and taking action, you know. Recognition is really important, but starting to figure it out and iterating and improving. Is more important than anything because it's been too long already without action.
You know, it's interesting. I, I'd be interested in connecting with your friend, uh, the EEEs, Fisher. Um, uh, retake is launching a study group process where we're looking at the new normal. And we're looking at all kinds of ways in which we could reinvent the way we use resources at work. Uh, at school, uh, in the health systems, um, in managing our, our lands. And um, so there's going to be a group of us studying a whole sequencing. We've got about forty articles laid out for people to start looking at. And we're going to start talking about it on Zoom with people and it'd be interesting to get some students to uh, tie into this. Or to make it known to them as a resource because we're going to have some very vibrant conversations about rethinking our health system. Rethinking, you know, our transportation system. Why is it that we have in some of these rural areas of New Mexico, a lot to, to a great extent in the indigenous community? They have no infrastructure and they have no telecommunications and, you know, there are models out there for public telecommunications systems. That bring that to and, and have local management. And so we're going to be examining all those kinds of things. Um, uh, starting in a couple of weeks and I'll send you information about it. You may want to share it with some of your. Uh, teachers and students, especially for high school students. It could be, uh, I've given talks at some of the high schools. Um, and uh, the students are pretty receptive.
Yeah, well, and, and students are passionate about this. Of course, it has to be actionable and, and, you know, feel very real and clear. To them.
And I think it's helpful to be able to see that, you know, in other countries and other decades. Um, these things have been done and are still being done and they're effective and everybody benefits. And yet you just won't consider them. And so opening those, if, if people start to see the possibilities. They can get more animated and, and uh, motivated to take action if they can see an alternative to advocate for.
And a clear sort of how it works because ultimately, you know, political leaders need backup to make courageous decisions. Because the skills in frankly, running a campaign versus being in office are very, very different. So. Um, by definition, because we campaigned for things, you get people in political office who care a lot about what a lot of people think. And, you know, are, are good at fusing a lot of views and, and sometimes that can be at odds with really courageous action. But if there is demonstrable community will and support, it gets a lot easier. And, and really, you know, making that aligned so that it can be about specific actionable things that can create catalytic. Um, change frankly, is important and, you know, I would argue. Until we get a better housing policy in Santa Fe, a lot of it is, is. Uh, fiddling around the edges because, you know, let's face it, this community is getting older and more expensive. The demographics and costs just simply don't lie. And until we have a really, a, a, a look, and, and housing is so basic, obviously, because it's just, it's the fundamental need. But um, that's something, you know, that it's like pick something and do it or, you know. If it's about changing the recycling policy or picking up trash, whatever it is and, you know, as I'm sure you know, in political change. Um, there's often the sense that you need to pick something, show a victory and then move on.
Right, right, right.
In order to build momentum and, and make everybody feel like what they're doing, their time and energy and efforts matter.
Right, right, right. Well, last question. In the face of challenges we face as a nation and as a world. Not the least of which is an imperious ineffective president, um, are you optimistic or pessimistic and what gives you hope?
Um, well, you know, I think I've, I've spelled out a lot of optimism and I guess I have to be. Because otherwise I'm going to end up just in my bed rocking and crying. Um, I have to be optimistic that this is. Such a challenging and tragic thing that we're facing. There are so many deaths and families affected and relationships and lives interrupted. That, you know, i- i- it is nothing short of a global tragedy, but. Sometimes the hardest things are the things that can bring most effective change. So I guess I, I am optimistic that this will um. Move us to better systems, more equitable, more um, commitment to the collective. And uh, our planet and, you know, doing better as a society. Having said that, what scares me is that we are digging in. On our political alignments and views and, and frankly. Losing the capacity to listen and understand. Um, you know, even to go back to the beginning of the broadcast, Paul, where you said something about. Um, the motivations of um, the right wing around public education. And I guess I'd say this, I don't believe that anyone believes that they. Want people to be dumber and less capable in their hearts. You and I may see that that is the effect of some of these policies and can say that and believe that. But I believe it's really important to try and understand what, what do they believe? Because they don't believe that children should be dumb and poor. They simply don't. Everybody wants their children to do better and so what is it? And truly what it is, is it's a belief that the private system can do better. And that there are alternatives and I happen to soundly disagree with that and. Feel very strongly about the issues of equity and access that in pushing to a private system. But I think that I will be able to talk to folks with different perspectives. If I come from a place of understanding them as humans and understanding the fundamental things. And honestly, I've been looking at a lot of right-wing stuff and trying to really internalize, okay. What do they mean when they say they're taking away our freedom? And it's been striking to me how much similarity there is in rhetoric about. This is pushing towards a fascist totalitarian state on both the left and the right. And so if we're both afraid of a totalitarian fascist regime, then there must be some common ground. And I don't have answers yet. I, and I'm, I'm trying to get there, but I really do believe that the danger lies. In us and them and that we have to do the hard work and walk the walk of. Understanding in order to bridge divides. Now that doesn't mean that we won't have to fight and fight hard. And fight smart and too, but I want to start with. The non-violent communication perspective and understanding and honestly, again, in my job in early childhood. It's been a really interesting thing because early childhood cuts across partisan and ideological lines. And everybody wants to invest in early childhood and the, the rhetoric may be different. You know, there's a very conservative organization called Ready Nation that is about investing in early childhood for military readiness. Because they found a long time ago that recruiting people when they were, you know, eighteen years old into the army, they couldn't read. And that's not good for the military. If you don't have people able to read and work as a team and they found that early childhood, you know, so there's lots of things. But ultimately, the point is just to reiterate, what scares me. Is that we dig in and stop being able to listen and see each other as humans. And the fact is, we are all humans who want to raise our children safely. And so that they can thrive and I think we have to start there and try and understand. What the people whose views differ from us are and where they're coming from and foster solutions. That begin to, you know, and it's, it's striking to me because. There are these words, there's these dog whistle words on the left and the right and that's what we go to when we get lazy. Whereas if we stop and use unifying words and, you know, work to understand it, things can get better. So again, I don't have answers, but I'm spending a lot of time in this right now and trying to understand. Where my friends who are in different political ideologies um, stand and why. And they're not crazy and they're not horrible human beings, even though when I get to my politics, that's what I think. And I think it's, it's actually going to be incredibly challenging and it's like, if there is a sort of. Thing that will make us slide into the dark side rather than the light side, it's that. It's when we get righteous and super entrenched in just. My view is correct and you have to come around because you're an idiot if you don't see my point of view. That's the path to darkness, whereas if we can have the courage and the tenacity and the strength to say. Oh boy, what you're saying is really triggering anger and a lot of reactions in me, but I want to understand. but I want to understand instead of react.
It's interesting you said that because, you know, our next door neighbors are among our best friends and they're Trump supporters. And, you know, we have some conversations, you know, it's different when you know and like each other than when you are at a rally where people are just shouting and so forth. And so we try and have conversations. And just before we started this show, I had written to him about the husband with a link to something where I had seen Republicans who were saying, you know, I voted for him in 2016, I can't do it again. And there were, they have videos of a hundred Republicans who are saying this and they're spending millions on ads. And I just said, I want to know your reaction. Because each one of these people has, you know, I mean, it's one thing, it seems to me like we've entered an age, like what you're saying, where it really is we and they, and there's no in-between. And like, I worry about the election because I can't imagine Donald Trump coming on the air the day after the election and saying, we fought a fine, you know, election. My opponent won, I'm going to do everything I can to make sure we have a smooth transition. It just, it doesn't seem possible that that would come out of his mouth. And so I worry about that. But it's like what you said, it's like, I see these problems, but I don't ever, I don't often see the solutions. And, but I do think some way of modifying the dialogue or the exchange of information so it's less antagonistic and hateful is certainly part of it.
And I think it starts small, you know, it starts with your neighbor. It starts with the people that I have relationships with. It starts with, you know, my husband said he has a friend who's been a stalwart Republican who ended up saying to him, if Democrats went on infrastructure, education and public health all the time, I'd vote for them. But, you know, and then there are things, I know that frankly, what the right wing considers to be gun rights and the left wing considers, well, my view is people's right not to die. You know, that's a really complicated issue for a lot of people around their freedom. And, you know, but thinking about public education and some of these unifying things first and starting with the small relationships and listening, I think is probably how we again, sort of build that muscle, build capacity to better understand where we can go. Because when we dig in, then, you know, Donald Trump is not going to be graceful, no matter what. No matter, I mean, so expecting that is frankly, not even remotely realistic, as you obviously know. But hopefully our institutions will hold up and that this country has strong enough systems to hold up. Even in the face of somebody, we can absolutely predict to not be graceful. And, you know, that we can have some unifying things and to understand what people's issues are and meet them where they are. It's just so important. Because honestly, this goes back to, I mentioned at the beginning, at my time as a business journalist, I used to watch Clinton administration's briefings on and on and on. And when Robert Rubin, who was Clinton's Treasury Secretary for a long time, talked about free trade a whole bunch. And there was a lot of, you know, embracing free trade and this, that and the other. And I sat there as somebody basically fresh out of college thinking, how does that work with unions and workers' rights in this country? And then Donald Trump comes along and he talks about that. And in essence, you know, one version is that he took advantage of rifts and of neoliberalism that really rooted in the Clinton administration and in those Treasury briefings that I watched when we embraced outsourcing of lots of manufacturing and not punishing corporations for hiring, you know, cheap labor overseas and this, that and the other, and the destruction of unions. And, you know, you can see the through lines. And that is what got Donald Trump a certain amount of support with working people. And, you know, the line goes all the way back. So understanding that it's not necessarily black and white and that, you know, keeping jobs in this country, investing in infrastructure, things that Donald Trump said, that even at the time, I found myself thinking, these Republican talking points? And, you know, honestly, I've been my entire life saying, isn't there some tension between what the Democrats have been trying to do in being the party of unions and the party of free trade? And, you know, not sort of, and just trying to brush that under the carpet and not embracing really, what does it mean to have a future labor force with robust jobs and a strong middle class based on what people can earn and bring home, you know, with frankly, I think, a strong safety, so is social safety net and all these things, you know, even looking at universal income. But there has to be a component to embracing labor and how this country works that has been brushed under the rug for way too long. And Donald Trump exploited that.
Yeah, well, you know what, I have this feeling we could talk for another two and a half hours. But if we record a four hour show, no one but,
No one will watch.
You know, your husband will watch it and Roxanne might, but no one else. So we're going to call it quits. If you ever decide,
I never even got to comment on the city, but that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, I skipped it just because I figured it was a rat hole, rabbit hole. And so thank you very much for your time, Kate. The best thing about doing this show is I get to have these kinds of conversations with people I'd never be able to sit down and just chat for an hour, hour and a half. And it's a real privilege to have had this conversation with you. And I wish you the best of luck as the school board president and with your family and your kids and with Zach. And thank you very much.
Well, thank you. It's been a great pleasure. And, you know, I love talking about this stuff, as you can probably tell. So love to do it anytime. And thank you for all of your time and energy in raising these issues and working to understand them and broadcast them to folks in the community. It's really important work and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Take care.